Scheduled meeting of December eighth.
President move to proceed to roll call on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Trolley. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. With a clerk, please call the roll.
Hey, Bealow. Pat Hovis.
Here.
Beth Gilman.
Here.
Resident Hickman.
Present.
Margaret Phillips.
Here.
Jerry Trolley.
Present.
Thank you. Counsel, you were emailed the November twenty fourth meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve of the minutes?
I move to approve those minutes, Madam Chairman or Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Do I have a second? I will second. Thank you, Mrs. Hovis. All in favor say aye. Say aye.
Aye.
Your motion carries. The Chair notes that certification has been made regarding compliance with the rules and notifications of this meeting. We have Mr. Norgard here to talk about the Port Clinton Life House Conservancy. Mr. Norgard, do you have the floor?
Thank you. I wanted to just take a few minutes to update you all on what we've been doing and some of our plans for the spring and and into the future. If you please feel free to ask any questions. So you know about the about the sculpture we had out this summer. We got it on loan. It was by Andy Saxdeter, who who had a studio here one time, actually made it here. We thought it was a perfect fit. We got it on loan. And then we got the idea of maybe trying to get it permanently. We started a committee to do a fundraiser and in a little over two months, we raised over fifty thousand dollars. And so now we own it. So so that was that was a nice thing, I think, for for us and for the city. So we're very proud of that. This year, we completed excavation landscaping and seeding of the area south of Derby Pond. The immediate effect of that work was mitigating the flood. As you know, there was a lot of flooding there. And with the grading that we did, we think that mitigated most of most of the flooding. We installed an eight-foot-wide handicap accessible walkway that completes the circumference around the Derby Pond. There is, as you may know, there's a section on the east end that is just gravel because of restrictions placed by by the Black Swamp Conservancy and the engineers on what we can do with that. We're not allowed to have a permeable surface there and any kind of petroleum-based blacktop. So so we're kind of left with the gravel for the time being. There are alternatives. And we would want to continue to talk with both the the concerned players, including the city, on alternatives that will let us put a non-permeable type blacktop there that's non-petroleum based that will allow it to maintain a better look around around the pond. So that's something we'd like to continue to work with the city on to do that. But but we do have it all the way around. If you're if you're a dedicated walker, we measured it off. It's almost exactly a quarter mile around. So it's like a track, basically, if you're if you're keeping count. We also purchased seven additional benches. You know, we've been putting those green benches. And we have concrete pads for those. So that will be an ongoing project. We'd like to to maintain uniformity of look throughout the park. We'd like to take some of the older stone benches that are along the walkway along the lake and convert those to to the green steel benches that we have now. And Mayor Snyder, I think when you when you talked to Alex recently, I think he might have mentioned that. Okay, so in the spring, we're going to finish planting and mulching the unfinished mound that's there next to the parking lot. And we're going to put install electric service to the boathouse. And also, we're going to put an antique light pole near the entrance to the boathouse to have lighting there. So some additional things we want to think about doing next year. And again, Mayor Snyder, we we've touched base with you on these a little bit. We want to continue to talk about them, but we'd like to have a welcome to the Port Clinton Lighthouse sign. And you're all familiar with the the big wooden billboard that is sitting on the edge of Perry Street, which is is blank. It's just a blank piece of wood most of the year, except when people put up banners. And so we would like to improve the look of that by putting replacing it with a permanent sign, welcoming people to the lighthouse. But when there are events, then you would put a banner. Or you could put a banner over that sign to advertise your event. So in other words, it would serve the same purpose, but it would when there is not a banner there, it would it would look a little better by having that Port Clinton Lighthouse sign there. So we are we are we are coming up with some designs. We're going to run them by the city for approval. Once we have something that that we think is acceptable. So we think that'll be an improvement. We'd like to also talk about doing a lighthouse welcome area with with a little bit of seating and perhaps a sun barrier just to the west of the boathouse. So this would be basically like a rest area for people that come to the lighthouse and they're out there going out there in their wheelchairs and stuff. And they have a place to rest, also wait for tours. It would be, and I'm not gonna, I'm not talking about like a permanent sun barrier, but something that we could put up when when we're doing tours or when we know that we're having people out there. And this would also be a nice time with a festival when we when we do our festival. So that's that's something we're looking at. There there's there's been talk about having a rest room out there somewhere. And we've been talking about that. One of the options that we've looked at is is making the restroom a replica of the old oil house. So this was a structure that was located sixty feet south of the lighthouse on the pier. And it would basically be a replica of that, but it would be a restroom. So it could sort of serve a double purpose for that reason. The and then the last but not least, the parking lot. So now that now that we have a look out there, the we were talking about wanting to pave that and landscape that parking lot. This project would be, and they say it went out for some numbers and they came back with a number, I think, was it was a hundred and ten thousand mikes, something like that?
In that neighborhood, yeah.
Yeah. And and maybe we could do it a little cheaper, but that's going to be something that I think is going to require multiple partners to make that happen. Maybe we can get some government money to also partner with some people to to pave that parking lot and kind of make that all sort of seamless in terms of the landscaping and the look of the area. And I think everybody agrees that's a good idea and principle. Can we make it happen in terms of funding? That's the question. So we would we would welcome any input on how we can bring that to fruition in terms of in terms of the funding. And, you know, if we can do that, we will, you know, we'll we'll partner up with the city on 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 the on drawing it and you know, come up with something that really looks good. And now the what, you know, since the Walleye Festival benefits greatly from that parking lot, I don't know, maybe maybe those folks would want to pitch in somehow. I don't I don't know. But that's it's just something to throw out there. But we would we would like to, we would love to do that. It's it's a lot sexier raising money for a statue than it is for a parking lot. And so we, you know, we raised fifty thousand dollars in a little over two months, but I don't I don't know if a parking lot would sell that easily. So so that's what we're looking at. And I just want to mention, we we've got Christmas wreath up on the lighthouse and the boathouse. We're going to have some a little more fancier holiday lighting up there in the next within the next couple of weeks. And that's pretty much all I had.
Mr. Norgard?
Yes, sir.
You mentioned the restroom. Now, would your committee be in charge of the upkeep, the cleaning, any problems with it?
We would anticipate that would that that would be a city. The city would take over responsibility for that.
Now, is that is there sewer in that area that or is there going to be an out health type?
I think that would Mayor, you might want to jump in here. You know, we've we've talked about doing this. I know you've wanted to put a restroom out there. I don't think there's anything out there now.
There isn't. I'm sorry, didn't mean to jump on you there. Mr. Trolley, Tracy, as well as Eric Peterson and Dave Basak from our sewer department have gone out there and have a general idea of what needs to be done to make that happen.
Okay.
So it wouldn't it wouldn't be a hole. It would be
Right.
connected to the sewer system.
Okay.
Thank you. So it wouldn't be a two-holer? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, well, that's all I had.
Does anyone else have any questions, Mr. Norgard? Okay, um, I think most of them
Is there sewer infrastructure out there now or not?
No.
There's no sewer water out there now.
Thank you.
I think most of this stuff would be talking with the benches or anything that you're asking would be up to Tracy administration-wise. And then if you're going to do a restroom in the parking lot, that would probably be something that would come before a committee or council or something like that. But I know the parking lot's been talked about for a while and has been discussed and so anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Norgard.
I'm gonna sign off.
You're more than welcome to stay if you'd like, but if you'd like to sign off, you can do that also.
I'll leave you guys to it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. In public comments from anyone?
I have received nothing.
Okay, Mr. Notary, did you want to speak?
I I got a phone call asking why there are bubbles in the water, and I thought I would ask Mr. Colston about that.
Excuse me?
Bubbles in the water, water coming out of the faucets have bubbles. And I just told him, I said, I think we usually have that every year. We have this time of year, Jan- January, when the it's just kind of a normal thing. I guess you've never noticed.
I've never seen that in all the years I've lived here.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's as though the water is churned up a bit. And if you leave it sit for a while, the bubbles decay and then the cats and dogs can drink all of it.
I can certainly ask that question, but I've never heard of such a thing in fifty nine years.
Well, here is here's your first first chance then.
Okay.
Thank you.
I will make a call. I will talk to my water guy tomorrow.
Thank you.
It's the bubbles go away, chocolate comes out of the pot.
That I could handle.
I'm sorry, Mr. Notary, did you want to speak during public comment today? No? Okay, just making sure since we're doing this. Okay, um, executive officers reports, um, I just will announce, I announced it last time too, but at this point, we'll continue doing Zoom. There was a House bill that passed, I believe it was four oh four, that extended governmental entities being able to do meetings virtually through July. So at this point, we'll keep doing it this way. It's a little cold to be outside. Unlike Busiris last week, I understand, was outside for three minutes and then stopped their meeting. But we'll continue doing this this way. So and then we did receive Brian Hill's resignation effective today, written resignation. And for the agenda, I asked Ms. Ostermeyer, since we are unable at this point to do the Pledge of Allegiance and the Lord's Prayer, that we're going to amend the agenda pending this, so it'll just start with call of order and then to roll call from here on out. So and again, if you're going to have committee meetings, just let Ms. Ostermeyer know when they're going to be so that she can publish them. That's all I have. Mayor's report.
Thank you, Madam President. How's everyone doing this evening? I want to extend a thank you to the to a variety of people tonight. The city crews, members of the Port Clinton Fire Department, Maria Moon and Marlene Banco and their crew for putting up Christmas decorations all around town. If you haven't had an opportunity to get out to take a look at that. One new addition this year, Fire Chief Kent Johnson and and my father, Snip Snyder, collaborated on a Santa Claus display across the street and across the street from me at Erie Derry Park. Kent acquired the Santa in a boat and my dad made the the reindeer that you see over there. So thanks to everyone that contributed to the decorations. I drove by Adam Street Park and the gazebo area looks spectacular. So it looks it's beginning to look a lot like Christmas, especially since Santa and Mrs. Claus were in town. I'd like to thank them for stopping by town for Operation Loud Rudolph. It was a huge success from what I understand. Hearing from Santa, there were a lot of kids and and ironically, a lot of adults without kids waving at Santa as he went through the the streets. This past summer, we've had a lot of business activity and property sales in downtown. And one of those was the Underwoods Building. Go to Underwoods Building and Underwoods Park. Underwoods Park is a private park, but for years, it was home to the Santa House. The folks that that own that property have some some plans to maintain it as a park, but asked that we relocate Santa's house. So if you haven't noticed, Santa House is also in Adams Park. There's a little bit more that needs to be done to shore up the the building. So our crews will be working on that as weather permits, if not yet, this fall, early winter, certainly next spring to get that more permanent fixture in 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 Adam Street Park. Also down in Adam Street Park is the annual Gift of Light Trees. They're still available. If individuals, families, clubs, organizations would like to sponsor a gift of light tree, I believe they're only thirty five dollars, give the Chamber of Commerce a call, four one nine seven three four five five zero three seven three four five five zero three. The way that works then, once the trees are sold, there'll be a variety of spots around town where you can make a a donation. And the tree with the most votes, i.e. most dollars, will have the opportunity next year to take all the money that's raised and donate that to their their favorite charity in the air. Bistro one sixty-three has asked me to announce their their Thanksgiving Community Feast was was so successful. They're going to do it again for Christmas. So on December twenty-third, from four to six, they will again have a drive-through meal prepared at their location right by City Hall. They do ask that everyone call for reservations, that carry out orders with limited delivery, to call to make a reservation or to call to make a donation to Bistro one sixty-three in support of of this Christmas dinner. Four one nine seven three four nine eight eight seven, seven three four nine eight eight seven. Again, that meal will take place on December twenty-third from four to six. Counsel, if you didn't see this, just a reminder, tomorrow, Wednesday at one o'clock, if the if you're available to meet at City Hall, the Walleye Drop is doing a virtual Walleye Drop this year with a combination of live events on the thirty-first and a series of tape messages. They've asked that we gather to record a taped message to the community in conjunction with their Walleye festivities. Again, they'll be at one o'clock tomorrow at at City Hall. I presume either out front or under the the police canopy if it's if it's inclement weather. Leaf pickup, for all intents and purposes, will will end tomorrow. So get out tonight, break your leaves to the curb. City crews will be going around making one final sweep of of leaves tomorrow. We're very, very close moving topics here to the Greater Port Clinton Area Arts Council. We are very, very close to a finalized lease. We've been talking with them back and forth at a fever pitch the past couple of days to work out some of the the minor details and hope to have that to you. If not the next council meeting, the first one in in twenty twenty-one. So we're we're all very, very excited to be this close to getting an art center. They've actually, they've already named it. They're already working on getting some grants and and loans to to do the the needed renovations. They've got a a beautiful site plan. So everyone's really excited to move forward with that. Also, over the next couple of weeks, we'll be, Tracy and I will be meeting with the Maples, Stacy and Chris Maple to discuss continuing the potential potentiality of continuing their lease agreement with the concession stand at City Park. All indications are that they would like to continue that as as their option is with the existing lease. So we should have some more information early twenty-one on that. Later this week on Friday, I've extended an offer to begin some dialogue with the county on bed tax collection, hoping to find a little more cooperation between our two entities in identifying streamlining the process of reporting and collecting bed tax, tracking those that are that are non-reporting to get a little bit more flow and and consistency in that that process. Mrs. Ostermeyer and I attended an online conference last week, dealing with just this topic and and having a little bit insight of from what I do on a daily basis. It gave me a lot of pretty good ideas to present to the county and others, ways to hopefully get a little bit more bed tax revenue coming into the city. And finally, I announced it at the last meeting, but I want to officially welcome Michelle Bryant as the city's new Tax Commissioner. Yesterday was her first day and at about seven thirty last night, I sent her a text asking if she was going to return for her second day. And thankfully, her response was absolutely. And when I told Mr. Colston about that, he laughed because that was the same question he asked her yesterday just before she left work. So when you get an opportunity, give her a call, say hi. Or if you see her around town, make sure you welcome Michelle Bryant to our family. So with that, Madam President, have a good one. I was going to end it with Go Bucks Beat Michigan, but Go Bucks Beat whoever the heck we play on Saturday. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Snyder. Auditor's report.
Thank you, Madam President. The only thing that I'd like to note is that I set out the November month-end schedules. I actually see those as part of the correspondence. So as always, if there's any questions, concerns about those, feel free to reach out to me. And that is it.
Thank you. Yeah, we've been adding those to the correspondence monthly now.
Okay, fantastic.
Thank you. And then from Mrs. Hanson, I have bed tax is one hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and one dollars and three cents. Dock tax is twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. Wall Director?
Thank you, Madam President. I do not have anything tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Colston?
Nothing tonight, Madam President.
Thank you. Committee reports. Mr. Bealow, Finance?
The Finance Committee is holding three public hearings on the proposed infrastructure monthly fee. The first meeting was held December second at six thirty. There wasn't a public comment, which is the objective of the three public hearings. No public comment at those. The next two will be Monday, December fourteenth at six thirty PM and Thursday, December seventeenth at six thirty PM. All via Zoom and all that information is available with the clerk and on the city website.
Thank you, Mr. Bealow. Environment and Public Works, Ms. Segman.
Nothing tonight, Madam President.
Safety Services, Ms. Phillips.
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Economic and Community Development, Mr. Bealow?
Thank you, Madam President. I learned the committee members what the final winning design was for the flag competition. There were about two hundred respondents. About half of those individuals identified themselves as residing within city limits. The other half were a mix of the four three four five two zip code or other stakeholders in the community. And the design that was by far the best was designed by a gentleman named Ben Lucas of Port Clinton. And I think I can, I see Ms. Ostermeyer has not let me try to share my screen. I was going to show you the design.
How do I share your screen?
And so you just don't have permission granted. That's okay. It's the one with the white background, red anchor and two red waves at the bottom.
Okay. Oh.
So the committee will get to work. First, I have to notify the winner. I'll email him and learn about him. I think I know who it is, but I'm not positive on who it is. If anyone knows, feel free to toss it out. And we'll look for some production, hopefully to be distributing some of the early flags early in twenty twenty-one. So thanks to everyone who participated. And counsel, thanks for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Bealow, for doing that. If you would like, also, you could provide that to Ms. Ostermeyer. She could post it on the city website Facebook page after you've notified the winner. So
We'll do.
Okay, Arts and Counsel or Culture, Mrs. Gilman.
Nothing tonight, Madam President.
Thank you. Counsel, you receive you received the Correspondence Month End Reports, a copy of Mr. Hill's resignation and an email about public utility commissions of Ohio. Do I have a motion to approve correspondence as stated? Promote. Thank you. Second, Ms. Phillips? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose the same sign. Okay, motion carries. And we'll move on to readings of ordinances and resolutions. We have no third readings. Second reading, would the clerk please read ordinance twenty-seven dash twenty by title and summary only?
Ordinance twenty-seven dash twenty, an ordinance appropriating certain funds for the operation of the city of Port Clinton, Ohio.
Thank you. Does counsel wish to take any action as to ordinance twenty-seven dash twenty? Seeing none, ordinance twenty-seven dash twenty will be moved to its third reading on December twenty-second, twenty twenty. Would the clerk please read ordinance twenty-eight dash twenty by title and summary only?
Ordinance twenty-eight dash twenty, an ordinance establishing a monthly infrastructure fee to fund the sanitary sewer, storm sewer, water line and associated pavement resurfacing improvements, portion of the Port Clinton Infrastructure Improvement Project and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Does counsel wish to take any action as to ordinance twenty-eight dash twenty? Seeing none, we move to its third reading, ordinance we move to its third reading on December twenty-second, twenty twenty. Would the clerk please read by title and summary only ordinance twenty-nine dash twenty?
Ordinance twenty-nine dash twenty, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Safety and Service to negotiate and enter into an agreement with a design engineering service company for the final design services of the Port Clinton Infrastructure Improvement Project and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Does counsel wish to take any action as to ordinance twenty-nine dash twenty? Seeing none, ordinance twenty-nine dash twenty will be moved to its third reading on December twenty-second, twenty twenty. We have no first readings. Business from the floor, Mrs. Phillips.
Thank you, Madam President. On Monday, because of way things are, the high school cannot display its talents in musical lines and such, so it's going to have a drive-through breakfast line. So you don't have to have tickets or anything, just drive through the front of the high school on the Madison Side Street and you get a small breakfast to take with you, but you also can enjoy the students along the line who are there displaying their talents one way or another. And that's the best that they can do this year. And I think that's pretty much it. Thank you, Madam President.
What time, Margaret?
Our nine o'clock.
Thank you.
Didn't we all get a notice? I think we all got a notice on that, didn't we? Or just old teachers?
Just you.
Miss?
You met Jefferson Street, didn't you?
Jefferson, would I say Madison?
Yes.
Jefferson. Run the school.
Yep, I thought so.
Good, you're gonna go? Breakfast.
Mrs. Hovis?
Um, the parade. It was awesome. It was fun actually being able to see Mr. and Mrs. Claus, Santa and Mrs. Claus on the float instead of stuck inside the truck again like the Easter Bunny. I've heard really good things about it. I've seen, I've been reading on Facebook good stuff about it. So it was very well done, was very enjoyable. And that's all I have tonight, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Bealow?
Nothing, Madam President.
Thank you. Mrs. Gilman?
Nothing tonight, Madam President.
Mr. Trolley? Mr. Trolley?
Yeah, a couple of things. First, Mr. Colston, your crew did a heck of a job in the snow removal for our first storm. Like to thank you for that.
I'll pass it on.
Mr. Mayor, what's the status of the electric work for the, at the beach? The electric company was going to handle that?
Yep. Mr. Colston, I just talked about that the other day. Trace, you?
I can handle that. We already signed a contract with Edison. Actually, I, we got, Cole, do you remember what that total was?
60, wasn't it?
No, no, we got it way down. Edison gave us a tremendous deal, so.
I would say it was just under 40, if I remember correctly, but I'd have to look and see for sure.
I think it's probably going to be closer to 35. But they said, once I signed that contract, Jerry, that it would take them probably six weeks. So I don't anticipate that till the first of the year. If they get a break and they've had some outages and different things, so obviously that's not a priority. But yeah, so it's, it's, it's moving forward quite nicely, so I'm very happy with it.
Good, thank you. That's all I have, Madam President.
Mrs. Hickman?
Nothing tonight, Madam President, thank you.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
If, one question first, anything on the dog park? Thought anymore about it?
It'll just have, well, we talked last time, go to committee sometime. I assume, probably wouldn't get that till January to even have discussion, I would think, but.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And with that, may this August body adjourn.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Trolley. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Adjourn, thank you.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.
Night.
Bye, everybody.
I wasn't with you.
You all look so handsome, you should see yourselves here. I'm a frog again, every time.